All right, we will call to the school board meeting of June 5th, 2024. You can all join me with my pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the government, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, on to the minutes from May 15. You have a motion to approve. Oh, okay. I will second. Yeah, we will lean through tonight, so yeah. Any discussion about the minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving the May 15 minutes?
Aye.
Okay, and we are on to public comments. Don't all jump up at once. Okay. I don't see any public comments, so we'll go move on to agenda review. Do you need to add a letter P? School calendar? Anything else?
Algebra conversation?
Um, I was just going to do during your report. Do you want to have something separate for the algebra? Or is during your report, okay, we want to have algebra. I don't know anything about algebra. It doesn't matter to you. In your report? Or do you want it separate?
It might just be a discussion, so it's totally a...
Put it on A.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think so.
We do, we need not cover. Uh, don't please don't cover. Review of correspondence. Was there any correspondence? I don't believe there was to the full board. Move on to consent agenda. No items. Media business, library curriculum. Moment. Just like that you wrote. Well, Kristen's just pulling up my presentation. Just pull it up, and I'll start talking. You won't start talking?
Nope.
Nope, I won't start talking.
Well, I'll use your computer. Oh, okay. We have some new faces here that might not know you. Okay, so Beth Moss too is our library media specialist full time. She has been with us for, this is your fifth year? Yes, for five years. While gone, and she will have a position as soon as I get all my passwords and second authentications and, you know. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the library curriculum you're about to see is a brand-new curriculum. The previous curriculum, which came out in 2017, or which was approved in 2017, it was on a different set of standards. And shortly after it was approved, that's when the American Association of School Libraries released their brand-new set of standards. So this is a brand-new curriculum. The previous curriculum also had no competency, that was not competency-based. So we turned this into a competency. I turned this into a competency-based curriculum. There wasn't a lot out there in the state of New Hampshire for other school library curriculums. So it was a lot of digging through other, you know, through my PLN to find other curriculums that would help guide me in this creation. So it was pulled together by a variety of sources. And there's a really pretty picture on the front of some kids doing sponsor learning, because that happens here all the time. I only write you like eighteen emails a day. Don't we have a larger camera like that? But I didn't share it with you on camera, I just shared it through email. But I can log it really fast. Uh, no, it was a camera. Did you already open it? There it is. Yay! Okay, cool. Oh, we probably have to go into edit and then present, because it's slightly different than Google. But I love camera. Okay. So, uh, this page here, and if you look at the bottom, I think you guys all have the new curriculum. You can go ahead to the next one. I did write which page number I'm referring to in the bottom corner. So this one's referring to page three. It's just our mission statement. I'm not going to like read it to you, but basically in here, we're looking to enhance literacy skills, cultivate our continuous learning, nurture our information literacy, foster our critical thinking, encourage digital citizenship, support social and emotional growth, and finally boost academic performance across the disciplines. And we really do that by collaborating with the classroom teachers. So making sure what happens in here enhances what's happening there. Rationale, basically in here, we are trying to get our students and staff to be effective users of ideas and information through the access of multiple genres and forms of literature. We want to develop those critical thinking skills, and they're all hopefully coming out as effective users of resources, ideas, information through collaborative learning opportunities in here. You walk in here, it's very rarely quiet because kids are constantly working in groups, buzzing and doing that thing. The four domains that really structure the competencies were pulled from the American Association School Library Standards. Think, create, share, and grow really structure most of this curriculum. And so when you actually see the competencies, you'll see that each key indicator reflects back to which domain is being touched upon. Basically, in the library, we have a lot of essential skills that we're covering. These are the seven categories of skills. They are by no means small, but we're promoting literacy and reading skills, developing critical thinking, encouraging our lifelong learning, supporting social and emotional development, fostering our information literacy, promoting digital citizenship, and supporting academic achievement. The guiding principles to our TCS library curriculum are right here. There's seven of them. There's more detail on page six and seven. To that, but those are our guiding principles. The essential environment in here has really changed in the five years that I've been in here. But these are really essential in creating our curriculum. We really want a welcoming, inclusive environment. We want all kids to be able to find themselves in a book here. They are all represented. We have flexible and collaborative spacing. Thanks to an ESTA grant a couple of years ago, our whole library is able to be moved in about four to five minutes. Patty and I are really fast at it. We are working on technology integration with all sorts of digital age skills. We use a lot of different databases. We use a lot of different creation skills. And Brooke Petroselli and I have managed to secure several grants with robotics. So robotics is completely embedded into K through eighth library and tech integration. And we do a lot of community engagement in here. We host a lot of author visits. Thanks to all of our fundraising efforts through the Read-A-Thon. We also host a lot of book groups. We have second through eighth grade in here on a weekly basis right now doing book groups in the library. We really focus on making sure this is their space. As for our library schedule, there's kind of two different types of schedules. You can do a face or a flexible. There's pros and cons of all. Ours is currently on a fixed schedule. We see our three-year-olds and four-year-olds weekly for a storytime. Three-year-olds, we go downstairs for, that's kind of like, you know, scary to come up here, those stairs are big. Four-year-olds come up, which is a great transition for them into kindergarten. K through five, we have library lessons. They come once every six days. And then sixth through eighth has media literacy here, and that's once through six days. This coming year will be our first year with eighth grade coming in. So we waterfalls sixth grade, seventh grade, and now eighth grade. So it's pretty unique. I am the one person in this building who sees every single kid. It's really... As for the curriculum here, our essential actions. Inquire, include, collaborate, curate, explore, and engage. Those are what our competencies are structured off of. And on the next page, there's a link to the actual competency document. This document, if you take a look at it, is broken up into grades spans K to two, three through five, and six through eight. Each competency, for example, inquire, has several performance indicators. You'll see that each performance indicator is linked back to one of those four domains that I introduced from the beginning. Yeah, it's kind of a long document, but it's there. And then the other link that I have here is just thematic scope and sequence. This is a working document. But this document shows month by month kind of what the various activities are that students are working in. And those obviously all tie to the competencies. This is constantly changing because it depends what the classroom teachers are asking. This year in sixth grade, we spent a month and a half working on research skills, and they did all their, they did a big ancient Egypt project. So they did all their research, all their citations, as well as their digital creation in here with me. First grade does a lot of comparing and contrasting. So we did that using the Three Little Pigs fairy tale unit. And then we went ahead and expanded that a little bit more by tying in robotics. They use B-Box. They have to do some problem-solving, creating, to get their big bad B-Bot all around to the three little houses. So this is a working document. This is by no means fixed, but that's kind of the outline of what happens. And I believe that's it.
Awesome. It's clearly you put a lot of effort and time into this. I really appreciate that. It's very robust. Any questions? I have a question, but I think you're really to be commended for coming up with all these competencies from nothing.
The competencies are based off AASL, but the problem is AASL has like, I don't know, 49 key indicators to go with each one. And I'm like, oh, that's like not feasible, so we gotta consolidate. But yeah, I'm excited to put it into motion this upcoming year.
Other questions from the board? Okay, I will make a motion to approve the library curriculum as presented. I'll say. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, I know, so I just mentioned, I just love that too, that you have a whole fake news and really...
Oh, yeah, we do a lot with that.
Really focusing on media literacy. I mean, it's just so important.
One of the coolest projects we did this year was our current seventh graders. They were given articles from a book called Two Truths and a Lie that you can read to kids, and two of them are real, one of them's false. And I gave the kids paper copies. They had to read it, decide if it's a truth or a lie. Then they had to go on, find credible sources to prove or disprove. They then had to create a website. So some of them were like, oh, you're making us make misinformation. And I was like, yes, but here's what we're going to do with it. They created websites based on their truth, their lie. And then we gave it to our fifth graders, who are upcoming, learning how to determine if a website is true or false. And so then they were trying to figure out if it was a truth and lie. So at the end, the big reveal was that our seventh graders had created these websites. It was really a cool learning opportunity. Seventh graders were so excited.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Cool, thanks.
Great. Okay. Music, hard to kill on.
Well, this is our curriculum.
Would it help me to have it up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's very helpful.
I think the last one was 2018. So that one was really good, like really good. And it was the AICL standard, the Essential Understanding Question. And that was the big switch, the competency, still based before the three indicators, that kind of thing. I think this is the statewide push for that. And prior to that, it was like 2011, which was really ridiculous. So these were brand-new. And we cut the essential actions, environments, and understandings because we're trying to keep it to be just curriculum, curriculum-only. But in a way, that kind of weakened the document because there were things that weren't really considered because there was essential action requirements or understandings. And I think having that kind of, we're not going like global picture, but the big picture of how music can work in a K school, those things are actually really important. So we did add the same ones back in. We were intentional and thoughtful and looked, argue essential action requirements and understandings. And then also, the curriculum review board really was hoping for a appendix, which includes a lot of the musical experience things, which, so it's an appendix. So it's okay. So it's not, it's not curriculum, but it's an appendix. It's really explaining how the curriculum looks, or how it could look in different music experiences. So that includes like the concerts, the musical performances. Kids have the middle-level honors band festival activity. Just like all these bonus things, Southeast Asian Festival. That's like a stage festival. That's not our curriculum. But if somebody was stepping into this role, they wouldn't want to know about those things.
Oh, yeah, so it's live.
Yeah.
We make slides, yes, so.
Yeah, so I mean, essentially what we really decided upon when we were really looking at our curriculum was, okay, how can we really deepen this up to explicitly state the longevity of a successful music program, right? And so we found that without these essential actions, understanding, and environments, then, you know, because it's not explicitly stated, then it's just like, oh, what do we actually do? You know, how can we actually create a music program that's strong and that's for the students, right? And then our appendix, like Melissa said, is just performance opportunities that kind of are the...
I would say similar to like...
culmination of what we do.
It's so much like thematic things, in that like, you know, like the thematic things, that's what I knew of our curriculum, is how the curriculum is expressed. So this is like ways that the music curriculum is expressed. And embedded in there also, from last time, the performance indicator, remember to the go-to each competency? So the competencies in themselves and the performance indicators are in that document as well. But then the rubers are linked off where you can see. Well, what does that really look like?
Yeah.
So like, yeah, this is the curriculum, but then this, 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 the competent and the success. And then this is like, yeah. Do you want to break me down?
Yeah.
So it's like a great overhaul, right?
Right, not a big overhaul, because our standards that we hold from the National Art Standards from 2014, they have not been updated nationally since then. And same goes with the New Hampshire arts competencies that were updated in 2015. They have not changed yet, so.
They go along with each other.
Something like that. That's cool. So what you're talking about is that would be the like create, perform...
Yeah.
Respond and connect.
Yeah, exactly. Run the National Arts Standards. Yeah.
And then it just spirals up for grade levels?
Awesome. Any questions? I don't have any questions. I don't think I introduced Michael Tron to this stage. Sorry.
Oh, the Eminem duo.
Yeah, Eminem, right, Eminem. So Melissa Davis, how many years, how long have you been here?
Eleven years.
Eleven years. And Michael Tron started as a long-term sub here and rolled into a position in 2019.
2019, yeah.
Yeah. Melissa, do you, you used to do the musical before.
That is in the...
Yes.
Look at that.
No, it's just a little bit.
Yeah.
In our appendix, that's just very little school. But there's like, there's some, there's some, what are they called? Pins, keystones, lenspins.
Did you stop doing that because the pen down there can, because you haven't had one for a while?
Yeah, yep.
Just hoping to bring it back.
Well, I think that should have got me in place. It could get pretty, pretty, pretty difficult to go through the list of things.
Well, and I heard, I just, I heard that maybe one of the problems too is that the stage is so much stuff on it that it's hard.
Oh, I, if I had to make a list of things...
No, the stage has nothing. Oh, it doesn't?
If I had to make a list of things, it's like a lot of like, like sweat equity stuff that has to be like put in, and it's really, I think it's...
It's a ton of work. I just was wondering.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, but also like, you can't work, you can't work off the license cost for a musical. Like MTI's not, can't have that one. I mean, then that hasn't helped get to that. So there's much of like...
There are a lot of fake, there are a lot of fake ones, so that you can get better grades.
Well, I would call what the third and fourth graders didn't fake, but we did write our own musical.
I was going to say, I heard just stunning things.
So I do have to say, I think, good.
When I say fake, I mean if they're written better, kind of like that. But they're not, you know, cats, and they're not...
Oh, I want the cats also. Other than, yes. It's a weird one.
I think you'd have kids yelling all through the hallway. Is the musical part of the program, or is this sort of separate?
No, it's like an extended like performance opportunity. Right, so it's not explicitly like, oh, we have to do a musical, but it's an example of a performance opportunity that we can do. Like, for example, and I don't think it's in our appendix right now, but we floated on the idea of doing a family folk dance night, you know, where we, you know, bring in, you know, families. You know, we teach our students, you know, our contra dances in the music classroom, and we bring parents and families in for an evening to, you know, have a folk dance night, to have a contra dance night. So, you know, not a required, but can be, you know, can be a...
And the practices are out, you know?
Well, so that's an example of like the musical experience...
Right.
That is showcasing something that's already happening in the classroom.
Yes.
So like...
But it's like an extracurricular activity.
Yeah, 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 like a fun community event.
Yeah.
Because it could just be in class, and then you could, you could not do these things.
Right.
If that's what you want to do too.
Yeah.
Because those are all just other ways to express these things and make more connections with the community.
Yeah, and we also want to ensure that students know that music doesn't just exist in our space, right? Music is a community event. Music is community. And so the, it's like that.
Well, if, you know, if it's a financial barrier or something, the school work is certainly included in the budget if there's a big desire to use a musical. So just talk to Kristen or whoever around the budget season. I would personally be happy to support it. I was a big musical theater girlie myself.
So important for the kids, because that's an avenue that, you know, there are kids that play sports, and then you have ones that just love theater. And for them to not get the opportunity to explore it and see it's huge. Yeah.
So if there's anything we can do to support, please do let us know.
So I have a question. Absolutely. For the, for this musical.
Yeah.
So do you actually have like a musical that you picked out for a year and said to the students, hey, is anybody interested? We can do this, it's a project.
In the past, it's been done a variety of ways. So one year, there was a weird setup. And they wanted me to, they, because it was all, it was when I first started, it was all the term, board members and admin. But they wanted me to do a, this was my second year, a class, a musical interclass elective. And this is definitely had electives, which is very hard to schedule and not, I would say, if Mr. Griffin here could be like icing me, it's like not possible. But we did an elective, so it was a class, it was built through the school day. So we were able to hone each aspect of this craft, work under this group. And the final thing we presented, we raised a lot of money. We didn't charge tickets, and it was like, and it was pretty, like, pretty good. And then that was one year class, because we didn't do electives. And so, but there was a lot of positive energy. And then I have my eldest daughter. The following year, there was Baby the Beast. That was very good. And that was done all outside of school. And there was, if you were a part of the musical club, you could suggest what to do, which is why we did Baby the Beast. It's not like they suggest what they know, you know? But the more you build a culture like that, probably the better the suggestion would be, I would imagine. You could get all the different shows, like the following one. I had Baby in high school musical, and then Shrek.
So it's been happening, but maybe not.
Well, it was like on the stuff, it was like, like, they, we had to do it when I had babies. They haven't kicked two years off. Then one year, there was COVID. And I had another baby. For here, it's year two. I don't think we had a lot of jiggle room with budget things this year. I don't know how, I don't know how to say this, but you guys are aware. And this is cool, but again, this is a musical experience in the appendix. And I've got zero planner in everything, do you know what I mean? So this is a yes. Yeah, that'd be so cool. But it like, it might be a little like horse before cart, you know? Like we talked about, like making this like beautiful, very crazy expensive building. That would be so cool. And, you know, we really need to like, you know, fix the scratch and beats.
Right, we want to be intentional about every step if we want to do a musical.
Absolutely.
We need, and we need the basics, like their net reads before we can figure out something else.
Yeah. And I think there's a lot of like mental work that would go into that. And that's like a lot of wheel spinning that might be not...
I think we just want to ensure with something like a musical that we have all hands on board before we, you know, commit to it. Because we want to ensure that this is a high-quality experience for our students.
Yeah, like with the third and fourth grade musical in the spring concert, we just owned it like, hey, this isn't our whole curriculum. This is us showing you what we can do. We worked on it for a month, and now we want to bring it to you. Yay! And it was like very well received. And I think a lot of parents were like, oh, and so now you're going to do the spring musical? I was like, no, that's, that's a very different...
Very different animal.
Yeah, it's just a lot different. It's a different, it's actually even a different fine art.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for the discussion. It was very helpful. Any other questions about the curriculum? I will make a motion to approve the curriculum, music curriculum as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys don't have to stick around if you don't want to. You're welcome, of course. If you don't have to, let me stay. Facilities updates.
I'll bet this is pretty helpful if I forget something, but Mr. Probst here, he met with us on Friday and doesn't have any new items to bring forward this evening. Everything is on track. That's what we presented to you last time. And he did talk to Chief Fisher about the gym protection and the engineer agreed to help us put that where it needs to be. And you might recall, we're saying, you can't sure his recommendations, why exactly where we were going to put it in first place? So he's been working with Chief Fisher. He should be able to take care of everything and wrap everything up.
Awesome. Perfect. Anything else? But Ms. Sherman forgot Ms. Webby?
I was about to mention, I think that was it.
I'm touched and hold.
A lot of stuff are at the beginning. Oh, I know, that's one of the things. We have the power purchase agreement getting legal review, and they already brought a couple of comments back. So as soon as that's done, we'll be getting them signed. I'm going to get the else's stats, bro.
Perfect. Bus stop appeal.
So you received an email that I forwarded to you, or a parent asking to change a bus stop.
And we have representatives from Dale with us tonight, um, and I don't, I see Mom coming. Um, she was invited to, um, bring the case forward. This is the email that I received. Um, and then typically you would hear from the parent about why they want the stop. Um, folks from this company would talk about why they don't have that as a stop, and then you would need to decide whether you're going to approve, um, the parent's appeal or not. Um, I guess we'll have, we'll have the email stand, um, for her reasons, if she's not here. And then if you want to hear from Kelly and Amy, um, that would-
Awesome. Does everyone have the chance to read this email?
Not yet.
Okay, um, would love to hear from Dale, or maybe Amy and Kelly with us.
Excellent. You're welcome to come and sit up here if you would like to.
Well, they're coming up. I forgot to mention Patty, no, come on up. Patty Moore is here. Patty is our, um, parent in the library. She, I didn't even see you over there. I don't know, how, how did I miss introducing Patty Moore?
I mentioned her name.
You did?
She did point to her.
I just want to make sure people acknowledge, because she must have come for the library curriculum, I'm sure. And I appreciate your time. Thank you, Patty, for coming. And, okay, perfect. Thank you, sorry. I just saw her over there, I wanted to make sure to acknowledge she was here.
So, the question is to have a bus stop at home rather than a bus stop where you're using it. We look at it, it's a portent of a mild difference, but it's not great. That's not the main issue. The main issue is the safety of where we're going with the Bus Stop School Bus. You just can't go down there. We even looked at trying off of where the bus stop is now, traveling down Candy itself to the end of the road. But that's not, not a good option either.
So the bus doesn't travel along Candy at all?
Not that portion.
That portion?
That portion goes between the Coal and Candy side and ends up on New Road. We don't travel from there with the bus.
Got it.
Um, it's, right now, it might look okay, but when it gets mud season, snow, ice, it's terrible. Um, and I did check in what you do just to get, you know, we had some other thoughts on it as well. And, and create what our concerns were, that, you know, it's the same thing. Um, I think she mentioned that, you know, when I use a guy's tractor trailer down here, there, well, the tractor trailer bends, the school bus doesn't, and there's no place to turn around down there. Um, if we crawl way down, it's, it's a little, it's even a little sketchy taking the smallest down here. So, um, we have to approach it, even if we go to the end of the road to turn around, over the road, we have to go take a right off before we get to the top, we swing, and there's a house right on the corner. And then, to turn around, it's narrow in there, and coming back out, there's a winding hill. So, a car might be able to, you know, step on it and go, and hope nothing's coming, but we get out there, and we're not, you know, we're not, uh, sports cars, it definitely wasn't, it don't. And if there's snow banks, it'd be a less easy road. So it's just not a safe option. And you're gonna put, you know, a tractor trailer's not carrying precious cargo with our students. That's a whole different thing. So it's just really not, um, a safe, essentially, to take a Bus Stop School Bus. Amy actually took the bus out with our safety instructor driver trainer, and we tried it out, just to see what they felt.
No, it's not doable. No, but when you get to the top of, um, the dirt section of Candy, you cannot take a right onto Coal Road, and we still have, there's still potentially three stops down there that will be picked up. So we would have to somehow figure out the dates next school year and possibly send two or three different buses through that area, just to make sure we get all the students picked up.
Do you have a question? So, the parent's concern is that the nearest bus stop, they feel is, the road is unsafe, right there, exactly?
They stand on Candy Road, which is off the main, I'd say, main drag, which is through there.
But it's a little bit, they're off a little bit of the main road?
Right, yeah.
But they're walking from their house to that bus stop at the intersection of Coal and Candy?
Or they're being dropped off?
They're being dropped off.
Oh, they're being dropped off, okay, sorry.
Well, she said one or the other. It sounds like if she has trouble and just leave early, then she, they walk her, and she drops him off and goes up. Am I understanding that?
Yeah, but, um, they're, um-
Yeah.
The parents do have to make concessions.
No, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just trying to get, get straight what she says, yes.
Um, usually you make, I think you make the motion the affirmative, so you make the motion to approve the appeal, and then you would vote yes or no.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
I kind of would like to go and see the area you're talking about. I'm not familiar with that piece. I kind of, personally, I'd like to just take a ride and see. I understand how long buses are, I get it. I haven't been over there in years. I just, I don't understand the whole configuration. I'd like to look at it personally, but.
Is this right by, um, Matthews? Yes, yeah. Right, okay. I'm envisioning where we're talking about. And Candy Road is particularly bad right there, in terms of like, I think it was down to basically one lane for like the fast.
When you turn onto the dirt section of Candy Road, Tom and I went really slow down there, and the bus barely fits.
Right, like it's very dirty. Oh, I know where it is.
Right, sorry, I was like, yeah.
I'm gonna work here. All of Candy is dirt, correct?
No, there's, where Coal and Candy meet is tar, and then you turn down Candy, it turns into dirt. We turned at that intersection, which is where we're currently picking up the two children. But going down there, there's, um, low tree coverage, so they were straight from the top of the roof of the bus, and then the bus fit in that lane, and there was no room for a car, and there's no snowbanks.
Okay.
And it's not icy.
And it's a scenic road, so I think the road agent is limited in what he can do on that.
And there was a time, Tom and I were talking in the bus, there was a time, I think it was like three days, that road, that section of road was closed, even the small bus, they might send a small bus down there because we had that washout.
Right, so she's saying that, so the stop where they get picked up is where Candy Road and Coal Road meet, correct? That's not dangerous. I've worked, I've worked all last year there, right at the Matthews house. I know how much traffic goes by. That's not dangerous at all.
So we stopped there, and if you're approaching the hill, because it is a one-hill, you're turning left.
Yeah.
You can at least see the, the lights of the bus-
It's a hill, though, basically.
Coming up. It would be, if you were pulling out of there, and a car was going up in the wind, which often happens, taking that left, the bus could be towed.
So these kids go down Coal Road?
They live, yeah, they live off of Coal onto Peterson.
Yeah.
So I actually drove down Coal, I actually drove down Candy, and Tom guided me, I backed into Peterson.
Yeah.
And again, it was tight.
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't send a new driver, and I had told Tom, I told you that, like, I don't think this would be for a new driver, somebody with experience. And like, but even Tom said it's tight, you know, between us, we have over thirty years' experience in the bus, and it was tight, and he was like walking up and down the aisle, okay, and it's just not feasible. And again, if you're coming down Candy, and it's icy, if a car's coming down, and I'm trying to back up, they can slide into the bus coming down that section of hill.
Okay. Can I imagine, I think there was a suggestion that you could turn around in driveway space, and that's not an option.
Not in Crystal's driveway. She had wanted us to go up to her parents' driveway.
We didn't go down Peterson.
You can't, you can't go down Peterson.
Got it.
Right, it's, the little bus fits on a good day.
Yeah, I walked that road. Um, okay, so I will make a motion to approve the appeal. Okay, so I'll second it, and then we're gonna vote on whether we- Correct, yeah, okay, so I'll second it. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? And all against? I, okay, zero three. Um, there are people in town who offer, for this mom, she's up here, but she's watching, there are people in town who offer pickup services up at their house in town. Um, and they're, I think they do drop off quite early if she could find one of those people. There's people you can drop your kids off, and they get picked up at their house, so. She needs help. Pass along a name or two. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, fiscal year twenty-four update.
So I have another, um, one of the memos, like I reviewed last time with you, uh, with updated numbers. There were a couple of changes in social education that actually, um, were to our credit, which is great. Um, still not looking like your current article will be fully funded, um, maybe potentially partly funded. Um, but again, you can review the updated numbers, and then Amber will be here, um, for your budgeting segment. She wants to have more, it was up to me that she had.
And things close the end of this month?
Yes.
Sounds good. Um, E, potential use of trust funds.
Yeah, okay.
It won't be in the little room again. No, that, I just can't read. App, potential use of trust funds.
So we have two, two items to talk about with the trust funds. Number one is that we will be, um, putting a public notice in the paper for a hearing, public hearing for your trust fund. We still have, I think, almost twenty thousand dollars to get reimbursed from projects since we had the last public hearing. So we will post tho, those amounts in the paper, and, um, you'll need to have a public hearing before you withdraw the remaining funds for the projects.
Do we need to do that before the books close, or does that not?
Yeah, that's why we're doing it next time, so we, it's, it, I mean, if it crosses fiscal years, it just means we had expenses come out, and the trust wouldn't be reimbursed until the next fiscal year.
Oh, I see.
So it's, we try to get it all back.
You try to get them.
Yeah.
These are all facilities.
Yeah.
Those, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think mostly, just in having, I might keep it, but I think it's mostly, um, it's smoke protection stuff, right? Smoke, fire, or, and the fire alarm stuff.
Chimney and chimney.
Oh, there was something, a repair, a fan repair, too.
Is a, yeah, the air handler, the GM, the smoke detectors, CO detectors.
Yep.
From the, yeah.
Yep, got it.
And then the bulk of the chimney repairs are coming up for July.
Um, the other thing for discussion was whether or not you wanted to take any other funds, um, from trust funds to try and balance the budget. It's, I think, it looks like we're gonna end okay, um, at this point. I was a little more concerned going along that we were gonna have to withdraw some funds, but I think we're safe to wait, um, on that. If we had to have an emergency, um, extra public hearing, we could certainly do that. But I think, that's why Amber's been trying to update your numbers, for you to see, um, where we are. And she's got better, um, revenue numbers now, because we did get a couple of, um, excess revenue checks that we didn't think we were getting. So, I, I think, I think you're gonna be okay not to take money out. Seems counterintuitive to take money out if it's a trust fund, if we don't need to, or if you kind of put more money into it.
Absolutely.
So, unless something goes haywire between now and the end, you should be fine.
So I didn't have any questions about that? All right. Open position.
Um, so, at the last meeting, we presented two candidates for approval. Um, the board approved the candidates, um, however, one candidate withdrew their application. And, um, I had spoken to Kendra when we were doing the agenda, and then the candidate withdrew to find out if we should put that on the agenda for discussion, because some concerns were expressed at the last meeting about whether or not we should have filled all of those positions. So, rather than start the hiring process over and, um, bring another candidate before you, we wanted to bring him before you to discuss, um, prior to advertising that position. Um, and this, I asked Mrs. Willi to come with information of the kindergarten numbers and be able to answer any questions she might have. Want her to start?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so, during, immediately the next day, Thursday, I had sent an email to the staff um, saying that the three positions had been approved, and that, um, we were moving forward with our three candidates. I reached out to all the three candidates to congratulate them. Um, and one of the candidates emailed back and said that she's withdrawing her name. So, knowing that the discussion, um, that took place, the, the public statement that was made after non-public, I knew that, um, in good faith, we should probably come forward and, and let you know that one of the candidates had withdrawn her name. Um, I have discussed, I have discussed this with the staff. Um, they are aware that we have, uh, two new hires that will be, one, a new hire for fifth grade, and a new hire for fourth grade. Um, we've taken a look at our kindergarten, uh, registration numbers. We had kindergarten kickoff yesterday, and, uh, we are up to forty, uh, forty-six kindergarten students. Um, it is still early in the registration process. Um, I've explained to the staff that at this, uh, um, that I was gonna bring forward the information to the school board, um, but that we, uh, we're in the middle of placement right now, and we have, we have got to move forward with some of these decisions. Um, and so, the kindergarten, preschool kindergarten team was tasked with creating two lists, one for three classrooms and one for four classrooms. Um, I, uh, if we're at three classrooms, we're looking at, uh, sixteen, fifteen, and fifteen with forty-six students. Um, and if we have, um, four classrooms, then, forty-six divided by four. Uh, ten, eleven, twelve, um, right, uh, which is what our current numbers are this year as well, with ten and eleven. Um, I did look at our first grade numbers, and I will tell you that our first grade class, um, is going to need to have three classes, um, dividing them up into four classes. Uh, they, they did well in the small kindergarten-sized classrooms, but putting them, there are some, um, energetic personalities and some strong personalities of our rising first graders, and we love them very much. But we also know that we have to place, um, kids carefully, just like we do every year with all of our classes. Um, but to put them from four into three, um, we are, we have had a few bumps, and I, I know that we cannot go down to two first grades. Um, in the meantime, I have had a conversation with a staff member in kindergarten and have explained the situation with the, um, with our current kindergarten numbers, and that if the registration does not, if the registration numbers do not increase, we will most likely stay at three kindergartens. Um, and so she is willing to go to fourth grade, so we would have a kindergarten teacher move to fourth grade. We would have a new kindergarten, a new fourth grade teacher, and, um, Mr. Ferguson will be teaching fourth grade as well. Um, like I said, it's early in the registration process. We literally could have people come out of the woodwork over the next, we've got four months before the next, before, you know, it's, it's June, July, August, September. We have technically three months at this point. Um, if our kindergarten numbers rise to fifty-five or fifty-six, I think we're looking at, um, keeping the four kindergartens and then going through the hiring process of finding a third, fourth grade teacher. So these are all the things that we've looked at as an administration team, we've discussed with the staff. Um, I guess I look to the board for, uh, to answer any questions you might have, and for direction on what you would like us to do. So, on the table right now is, do we have four kindergartens with forty-six students registered, and then hire for a third, fourth grade teacher? Or do we stick with three kindergartens? Um, move one of our kindergarten teachers up to fourth grade, and that, it will still have that open position. Um, and then, you know, the, one of the bigger pictures here is, that does open up a classroom, so that, but it only opens up one classroom. But, I mean, these are, these are the things that we're, we're looking at in terms of the small, small things that we can do to get creative with our, with our, with our class sizes and that type of thing. Um, it solves the problem by opening up one classroom, so.
I'd like to say, thank you very, very much for coming to us about this. I personally think it makes sense to go with a three kindergarten teacher, the fourth grade. And then if, like I said, if all hell breaks loose, and you have to make that decision for a new teacher, but right now, I think it makes sense to stick with the third. That's my opinion. Um, in your opinion, if like, let's say we are approaching August, and we get an influx of students, would it be incredibly problematic to hire and onboard a teacher that close to the start of the school year?
Um, we've done it. You know, we've had, we've had open positions into August that we've had to fill. Um, I'm, I don't, it depends on, you know, who's out there, who's gotten jobs, who hasn't gotten jobs, who, it, it's hard to, to pull a person that's, uh, in another, like, it would be, it probably end up being- i- it's hard to, to pull a person that's, uh, in another, like, it would be, it probably end up being a new teacher who hasn't gotten a position yet because for a teacher to leave a school district in August, uh, they wouldn't be released from their contract until their position was filled and it's, it can, it can get a little messy. It's, that's become superintendent to superintendent conversations. Um, we have filled positions in August. Um, and.
I agree. I mean, it's difficult. It's kind of a, I can say that. I was looking at, I was trying to find the, um, my computer, I can't get on my computer because I couldn't bring my phone. But can somebody from last week change the policy? Cause I have the old one. I don't have what we changed it to. For the minutes? I don't really, I don't think so.
What, for what is the?
Class sizes.
Yeah.
The class size recommendations and I know we upped the kindergarten, it was fourteen students and we upped it to sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's still, uh, about what? There's like, sometimes three, fourteen. That's not much, well, two more, right? But we also, I mean, we also talk about minimum sizes and, you know, I mean, there's both, if it's too small or if it's too big, it kind of goes both ways. You have to go a little bit, you go under. And the state is twenty. I know that's higher than what we want, but it, and that's what a lot of schools in the area are, for twenty, cause they follow the state guidelines. So I, I just feel that that shows more of a, an effort on our part to reduce expenses because that would be the reduction of one teacher, all the healthcare costs, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's showing that we are trying to reduce our expenses. And we don't know yet if we're gonna have all those kids in kindergarten. Because having a kindergarten class with, you know, eleven kids, twelve kids, it's so small. It's really, really small. And very different than what other communities are doing around us to have that small of a kindergarten. So I think it makes sense to wait, even though you're taking a chance that if you get like ten, twelve registrations and we have to find a new teacher. I know, I know we're taking a, excuse me, a chance of finding a new teacher at that point.
I'm in agreement for, um, three classrooms for the kindergarten. I think it makes more sense. Um, I can't remember because things have been very busy in our life as well. Uh, if there was some talk at the state level where they were going to be discontinuing their state requirement of how big classes could be. I, I could be wrong.
I hope they don't.
I mean, there's been a lot of work going on with the DOE in terms of their, um, standards. Um, I don't think those are anywhere close to being finalized.
There's a lot of pushback on those too. We're trying to reduce things a lot. But, I mean, if you look at the kindergarten classrooms for square footage and what is allowed by the state, we can have up to twenty-three students in each classroom. I agree, that's way too much for kindergarten. But I'm just saying that kindergarten classrooms are big enough for, for that. If you look at the number of kids, I wouldn't want us to go to that high number because I don't think that would be in our best interest. But I do think eleven is way too small.
I think it's eighteen, actually. Didn't, wasn't it, it was sixteen to eighteen was the kindergarten and then eighteen to twenty for first grade and then twenty-two. First through fourth was twenty-two, uh, and then up, fifth grade through up is twenty-two, I think, if I remember correctly.
Um, my feeling about the whole thing is that I'm, I'm nervous about the idea of taking a gamble on hiring someone soulmate. I think we are going to have a very new fourth grade team, new to fourth grade, not necessarily, um, new teachers, but new to, new to that level. And I just, I worry that we're taking a gamble and it's a little, um, penny wise, pound foolish perhaps to wait so that we can save the money on the one teacher salary, but then have to potentially scramble at the beginning of the year, sort of take what we can get. Not that, not to say we couldn't get a qualified and great teacher then, but it's a gamble. Um, you know, we obviously already have the money in the budget for this year for that position. So my feeling is that we should keep four, but obviously understand, um, the position that we're in, so.
Maybe the other thing too is if there's one classroom freed up, I know it's only one classroom, but you wouldn't have to have second grade out in the modules. I mean, second grade is so small to have it modular. If you bring a second grade classroom in, you can have all your second grade in here.
We've already considered all of those things.
Yeah.
But I just want to, uh, just the bigger picture. I know people are trying to free up space and that doesn't really solve that problem.
Or you solve the health teacher without a classroom.
Right, yep.
We still have lots of specialists.
Sharing classes is a good, you know, it's a good move and a good direction. It's not to be belittled and say that's worthless.
I'm not saying it's worthless, but it's certainly, doesn't solve the bigger issues, right?
There's work to be done.
Yeah. That's a move in the right direction. Okay, so do we, do we vote on what I, what our recommendation is?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're producing.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna move that we go with the three kindergarten classrooms and, um, we move the kindergarten teacher up to fourth grade and then we have to reevaluate it if it, numbers go way up in August. So I, that's what I move.
Um, discussion, I would say that this is still a bigger conversation that we're gonna have to have on budget season because we'll have to see where things are at for the budget and whether or not this is sort of a permanent reduction or if we're just gonna keep the same number of teachers in the budget. Um, so I don't want.
Yeah, but that's not so, we're, we're not gonna be starting.
We're starting to talk about the budget next meeting.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, I love the budget.
Well, we definitely, definitely keep that money in there because for now, anyway. But, but by the time you finalize our budget, then we have to talk about it.
I just, I don't want there to be mass panic that like we have forever taken away a position because of the vote tonight.
I also want to agree, I mean, we've had three kindergarten teachers for a long time. It's fairly new that we have four, isn't it? When did you have four? That was.
Um, my first year, there were four, um.
You had four?
Yeah.
For how many years?
Quite a while. We went down to three one year and I remember scrambling and trying to buy furniture for four at the time to add another one because so many kids show up. It was a scary thing. It's, it is, you know, you try, try to have your best estimate, what's gonna happen.
And I, and the numbers have been going down, but again, you just don't know. The numbers have been going down. That's like the unknown rate for sure.
And also too, I feel like since, um, COVID, a lot of people have uprooted out of their jobs and done this and done that. And people move around very quickly, very quickly. They make decisions quickly about changing jobs. I don't think that you're gonna be at a loss for a teacher if you have to hire another one.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
The pool will be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with that. I think that most teachers start off looking when it's contract season, which is.
Oh, I get that. But things can happen.
Right, I'm not saying it's impossible and again, not saying that like it's, it would be impossible for us to hire someone qualified and a great fit for our school, but I, I think the pool of candidates will be a lot smaller. And if we're struggling and needing to hire someone, we may not have the time to sort of wait and see if we can get more applicants and do the typical process that we would normally do, so. Um, but there is a motion pending, so all in favor of moving forward with three kindergartens?
Aye.
Both. All right. School calendar.
Um, so I'm looking at the school calendar. We, um, right now, the last day for students is on Monday. Uh, and it occurred to us that we did not use all of our built-in snow days, so I think someone called it a sunshine day. Um, but we, we were talking about ending school on Friday instead of Monday. Um, we already have the days built in and we can use all of them. So it doesn't impact our days or instructional time at all. And we thought it might be easier than trying to hope that the kids come back for school on Monday. And does that impact graduation, graduations?
Thursday is graduation.
I was like, oh my god.
I have one Thursday and Friday.
I'm not from here.
Teachers would need to come Monday. Yeah, yeah. It'll be the last day for students, but teachers' contracts are different than students, yeah.
No, that's for me from this morning. It was supposed to be, yes, yes, yes. It was supposed to be the seventh, it'd be the, so be court pressure, yeah.
Um, I assume there would be no pushback from the teachers about ending students at dinner? That might be a dumb question.
No, actually, it's not, it's not. Um, and I, I, I know, um, I just, it, it's a, it's an interesting year this year because we are ending on a Monday and we didn't use our snow days. It's, um, not a precedent-setting move, I don't think. You know, we're not saying from the, he, this point forward every time. But in this particular case, um, you know, it's, it's, we have not used all our snow days. We, the attendance would definitely be down on Monday. Um, but like I said, teachers are, are expected to be at school um, because their contract is for a certain number of days. Students, students run by hours, we run by a contract.
Um, do you, I don't know if this has been done before. I don't know sort of how often this happens, but do you think there will be pushback from parents who are not planning on?
That I don't know. I did overhear a parent saying, oh, we're not even gonna be here that Monday. We're going to blah, 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 so. I think with enough notice.
Yeah, I did, um, give a heads up to the director, Ferguson, that this may happen.
Oh, okay.
Cause he's starting their.
Summer program.
Summer program on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I said, no decision has been made yet, but what if?
Hmm.
Um, and he, you know, would sort of figure out whether it's necessary or not.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Do you need a motion from us? Okay. I will make a motion to have the last day of school for students be Friday, June fourteenth.
Second.
Yeah. I think it was messy. Go messy. All right. Okay, all in favor?
I gotta get this out now because if I don't.
Between the peanut gallery and the people arguing.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone arguing.
Mm-hmm. I like things to come from me first.
You want us to roll in your thoughts for a second?
Nope, I can, why, unless I'm next.
You are. Algebra discussion.
Algebra, yeah.
We'll give you a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay, you can, you can go to the, um, PTO. Can you start border board?
Okay, border board.
Okay, I'll be quick though.
PTO.
I'll try to talk slow. Cause I only have one thing to update and that was our assembly, the BMX assembly. It did happen. It was a beautiful day. Um, actually, it was quite sunny. Somebody got a little bit of thunder, but that's okay. I thought it went fantastic and I think the kids had a great time. And hopefully the kids will take away the message that it was intended to bring, which was always wear your helmet. And then the three Rs of bullying, which are recognize if you or someone else are being bullied, react by telling a teacher or another trusted adult, and refuse bullying from your life by not participating in bullying yourself. So it was a really exciting assembly. There was a lot of loud cheering. At some point, I had to cover my ears. Um, so I do think the kids really, really enjoyed it and I'm so happy that Focus was able to help us with this and we can make this possible with PTO and Focus.
That's awesome.
Great.
And that's our finale for the year. It's a wrap. We're gonna take this month off. Until it's time to talk about the back to school barbecue.
And it's free fundraising is done and they're off in New York.
Good luck today. We wave goodbye.
And you had a moment of cheering for about thirteen don't fundraising.
Great thing. So yeah. And so you're ready to talk about the back to school barbecue?
Oh, oh, great. We don't have to yell to keep reminding you every meeting. That's what we do. Okay.
Well, I mean, it's quite.
I'll keep it in my mind this time.
It's pretty set now.
Yeah, it's a theme every year, so.
We just follow the, the pattern that's already put in place for us.
Zach's not here though, so I don't know how to do anything.
As well.
With the grill.
As well.
I did grill, sure. But I don't know where the grill's on.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make that come back and help.
His youngest sister is in fact, so it's fine.
Exactly.
Um, but I assume that'll be the Monday, the week school starts, just as it has been in the past. That would not happen.
You, you tell me.
That'll be for next month.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
For August later.
Yeah. Awesome, that's great. Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Sending, thank you.
You're welcome. We're going back to algebra.
Okay, here we go. All right, um, so, uh, we're bringing this to the board because it, algebra is part of, is a curriculum decision. Um, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we have sixty rising eighth graders. So we have sixty, about sixty students going into eighth grade. Our current seventh grade class has approximately twelve to fourteen students who the, um, Mr. St. Germain is our current seventh grade math teacher. He feels confident that they could take on the challenge of algebra. Uh, this would lead our, as you know, we have three, uh, rotations of students. So we have an ELA, um, science and math. This would leave our, our other two classes for math, um, at about twenty-four to twenty-six students. Um, we just passed an updated, um, minimum, maximum class size of twenty-two. So that, first of all, exceeds that. Um, but also that's a lot of students to have, um, in, in a math class. And it also will affect the other three core classes as well because oftentimes, um, the class is built and they travel, there, there could be ins and outs of kids moving in and out depending, but for the most part, um, it would affect the other classes as well. So the question came up and it's been a conversation that we've had within the district for probably a year, maybe two years, um, about the appropriateness of algebra at the middle school level. So where we stand is, um, you know, we looked at, at can we find four or five more kids that might be able to have enough skill level to be able to take on, um, algebra next year? Um, could we take a look at our win model that we're changing for next year? And perhaps maybe have our math teacher work on some discrete skills to build that up for students? Um, so we, we, we definitely looked at a couple of different options. Um, in considering our two, three high school choices at this point, uh, Co-Brown actually has, kids have to test to go into, uh, test out of algebra to be placed into advanced algebra. Uh, they cannot place out of advanced algebra. So they, they can test out of, out, the algebra class, but they cannot test out of advanced algebra. So they would, if they were able to, they would go from here, finishing alge-, so our current eighth graders will finish algebra here. If they, um, if they test out at, in Co-Brown, they can be placed in advanced algebra. Otherwise, they'll redo algebra, um, at Co-Brown. Concord is, um, currently in this, through this current year, uh, up until this point, I should say, if they successfully, successfully pass Algebra One here at, um, DCS, uh, the teacher can recommend that they go into geometry at, at Concord High School for their freshman year. Uh, they are currently restructuring their math program so that if students complete Algebra One here, um, with, with the teacher's recommendation, they would now go into Algebra Two, they would not go into geometry. So they will, they could, upon, with successful completion of Algebra One here, go into Algebra Two. Um, so Algebra One will be offered still at Concord High School for ninth grade. Tenth grade would be Algebra Two and geometry, Algebra Three. So our kids could test out or, or with teacher recommendation, go into Algebra Two, um, for next year. Um, so, uh, uh, back to the conversation about win. Um, we are, we have, we, we have built our schedule, um, to have win every single day next year for grades four through eight. Um, we're finding that, um, it is, we've, we've had conversations with other administration. We've had conversations with our specialists in the, in the building. Um, and we're feeling like we're, um, we're, we're, we're just sort of coming out of that COVID, uh, kids with lacking, lagging skills, trying to bring them along. Um, so we are going to plan for win every single day next year, which would need the, um, skills of our math teachers and our specialists all. Everybody's on board right now. If we were to.
Could you just explain a little bit, when?
Oh, sorry, I know, gosh, I'm talking education jargon. Win is what I need. So we've done win at the K to three level for, for many years. Um, and they've done it at the middle school level off and on, but, um, so basically what happens is during, during PLC meeting, we might look at some, we might look at, um, student data and take a look at what, where kids, what, what kids need support in what areas. Um, we, we use our iReady data, we use our New Hampshire SAS data, we use formative information, summative information from class, from teachers. Um, and then, you know, if we have a kid, some kids. And then, you know, if we have some kids in math that are, have no skills whatsoever in fractions, they might go into a WIN group or what I need group a couple of times a week to work strictly on that skill because they're not working on that in math. So that's an area that they need to get some support in. So next year, our plan is to have WIN every single day. And so kids who
Is that a separate time from their normal math class?
Yes. It's an intervention block. Does that, does that, explain it a little bit more? Let's see, is that good for you?
And the kids that don't need intervention, what are they doing during that time?
Next year, we're looking at an enrichment block, one of, one of the WIN cycles would be
Intervention or enrichment.
Correct. Yep, yep. By putting a couple of kids in these small WIN groups with a math teacher to work on some discrete skills would take that math teacher out of the rotation of supporting other kids that might need help during that time. So, and it would leave our WIN groups at like 18 to 21 kids in a group. Ideally, WIN is a smaller intervention group with 10 to 12 kids, right, exactly, it's not, it will lose its effectiveness. And it will, it will really dismantle the, the plan that we have moving forward. We did email other schools in our district, the principals in our district, to find out what they've done for algebra, if they don't have enough kids. And many years, they don't have enough kids to go into an algebra class. So they've offered, you know, V-Lax is always an option. You know, we don't have a world language program here, so some of our kids do do V-Lax for world language, for either French or Spanish. So that was one, one of the suggestions that one of the principals had made, that that's what he does at his school. I think, I think part of this conversation too, in speaking with Mr. Dudley, who is our eighth grade math teacher, he, he is finding that kids are really not ready for algebra, that they, it takes a level of grit that we're not really seeing right now in, in students.
It's a hard concept for a lot of kids to get.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of, I haven't done, gone deep into research on this, but there's been a lot of conversation based on research of whether it's even age appropriate for eighth graders to be taking algebra. I, I know my own stu-, my own kids are, were very strong in math and they redid algebra in, in ninth grade because they just weren't ready for a lot of the concepts, so. Mr. Dudley has seen a decline in work production. And he thinks that probably half the kids that took algebra this year will have to repeat algebra at, at high school. And I think we have 18 or so students this year in the algebra class in the eighth grade currently, yeah.
And some of them will need to test into Co-Brown.
Correct. So that's where we are. So, um, the question, I guess, is do we offer algebra next year knowing our current situation or our rising situation?
What does the math department want to be out, what's their preference?
Their preference is no algebra.
Now, what about during the enrichment, the WIN enrichment? Would there be kids that would be able to
Advance during math? Algebra adjacent things? I don't know what that means, but yeah, throw a ladder in.
Most, most of our, I, I, I don't, I can't answer that question. I'm stumbling. So I don't have an answer, but I could get an answer for you.
If that's a way to maybe hit this very small number of kids that are ready for algebra is to get a very enrichment.
Yeah, like if there's, I don't know, I, I'm not gonna pretend that I was ever good at math. But I don't know if there's like a, I don't, what I don't want is for the students who are excelling in math to sort of be stagnant, to not have an opportunity to do some sort of advanced math topics.
They, they have V-Lax as an option.
Yeah, and it is an option.
I, I remember when I was here, there were some students who did that too. That way they would have an opportunity to use that opportunity.
If there was time.
But I'm kind of wondering for three kids that are really good at math, like what would they be doing during enrichment? Anyway, I mean, maybe that's a natural thing. Doing algebra during enrichment, and if they'd be having it every day, then they'd be having some every day. And then they'd have their other math class, right? Whatever that math class.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so I mean, that's an opportunity to get algebra for the kids that need it, but not have to have it for the whole degree.
They do V-Lax, but is their math class?
That's a good question, I don't know, it's, it's
Taking algebra.
Where do they do that?
They did, they used to do it in the library, but who knows?
We haven't had to Yeah, right, we haven't had to do it in a while. The students who took language did their work at home with an opportunity to work during study if they needed it. You know, a couple
I know world languages people do outside of school.
Yeah.
I did, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with, with taking the department's recommendation on this, but I would hope that there's a conscious effort to reach out to the students who are showing more acumen than I ever did. You know, encouraging them to pursue advanced math topics. While, during the day.
Because I wouldn't want them to miss out on things that are good at math, really good at math, and then they'd be a year behind at Concord High or Co-Brown.
I mean, they might still be like, I'm not sure that, I don't know if the WIN would, would be a full, like curriculum class, but, so they probably would still have to do algebra.
Right. It may not be, it may not be appropriate, I was just throwing it out there. And if it's not appropriate, V-Lax would probably be the way to go.
Yeah, we just have to figure it out, because I would
V-Lax is a certain kind of kid who doesn't mind sitting in front of a computer. That's not me. And I love math, but that's, I have nothing
And you have to do it outside of school, and you also have homework, you have sports, like
That, to me, that's It's not going to be outside of school because it'd be during their math class, but there'd be a happier place for them to go.
Yes, if that's how it's
You have to be very self-motivated for V-Lax, especially V-Lax math, because it's a lot of teaching yourself. It's not, there's an instru-, not an instructor on the other side answering your questions, showing you a lesson. It's, here's your assignment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really do defer to the department. They're there, they're the ones teaching the kids and they know sort of what the group is.
I agree, but I'm with you, I don't want to see the kids that are really great in math fall behind because we're not awesome.
Or be like incredibly bored and not engaged at all. Yeah, if they could get thought of that, that would be great. Do you need anything from us on that?
No, just making sure you're, you're aware that we had a conversation. Conversation had, and you're in agreement.
Yes.
Consensus. Okay.
Okay, executive board update, Nancy's not here, I don't know the executive board. Principal's in for it. You're just
I know. All right, um, so this covers May 16th through June 5th. May was one of those months that had a bonus Wednesday in it. So on May 15th through the 17th, if you remember correct from my last report, our sixth graders had gone to the overnight trip with Maravista. And then on that Wednesday, our seventh graders went to Maravista, overlapped with sixth grade, sixth grade then came back later that afternoon, and our seventh grader stayed for their overnight, two, two nights overnight at, at the Maravista, which was a over, nature camp ropes course team building. They had a wonderful time. Next year, sixth grade will take over that trip and seventh grade will, will go back to their, their annual trips that they've taken. That will give fundraisers a break between fundraising for sixth grade for Maravista, break in seventh grade to continue, and then fundraising for the New York City trip for eighth graders. On Friday, May 17th, our fifth graders did take their field trip to Boston. And this is an exciting field trip for our kids because they are able to take the train into Boston and then stay an extended amount of time and come back by train. And then a bus picks them up and brings them back to the school. They usually get back to school around seven o'clock or so. I can't, if, if I remember correctly, they're seven o'clock. So it's an exciting trip for our fifth graders. That same day on Friday, Wildlife Encounters, encounters visited our kindergarteners. So they brought a bunch of wild creatures in to visit with our kindergarteners and they loved it. On Monday, the 20th, our fifth graders visited Starbase. I think I mentioned this the last time, Starbase is a, in Pembroke, it's a Department of Defense has created. This is only for fifth grade in the state of New Hampshire, completely free field trip. All we had to do was pay for transportation. And our students were, visited Starbase three times. Our fifth graders had to break up into two groups. So actually, just today, half of one fifth grade and another whole fifth grade went today. Another half and the whole went on Monday. As I said, this was their third trip and they have, the things that they've done have been amazing. They've already booked their trip for next year, but they've done all kinds of STEAM activities. And the hope is that we'll get the kids there before on New Hampshire SAS science testing next year because a, a lot of the things that they do in there are very tied nicely into what they have to do on the New Hampshire SAS science test in fifth grade. No, 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 we'll keep it at fifth grade, but they'll go earlier in the spring. This year, they went kind of right smack dab in the middle of New Hampshire SAS testing, so it'll be great to have that under their belt. And I, today was our last visit and I got a lovely email from Mark Campbell, who is, who is the gentleman in charge of, he's the director of Starbase. And he said, I just wanted to thank you for having students attend Starbase. The kids were awesome and your staff was amazing. Students were engaged in activities, acted respectfully with kindness. My staff thoroughly enjoyed working with them, your staff was so nice, helpful and totally engaged. It was the best group of staff members we have had here at Starbase, New Hampshire. I don't know if he's just saying that, or, but I, and he did CC my, the whole fifth grade team, so I was thrilled. And he included a video, which I'd be happy to share if you
I just make sure that there are no students in the video that don't, we have permission to do pictures.
Sure.
Because if that's the case, I would welcome people to see it. And you can see the activities and that, that will be so exciting, the little robots, you know, where I
Oh, yeah, absolutely, mhm, and Brooke, and Brooke would be thrilled. So that was a nice email to, and I wanted to make sure the board heard that. The PTO, also on that Monday, PTO and Focus sponsored Dialed Action Sports, BMX Bike Show. Mrs. Davis actually laid down and let a bike jump over her and two other staff members.
I was, I was at my graduation.
Oh, right, 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 right. The whole, and they highlighted bike safety and bullying as well. Thank you to the Focus and PTO for that. Tuesday, the 21st, our second graders took a field trip to the Seacoast Science Center. Wednesday, the 22nd, we had our, we started our kindergarten screener for our rising kindergarteners. So we had some incoming kindergarteners come in to do a screener with our reading and math specialist. On Wednesday, the 22nd, we had our spring concert featuring our DCS band and chorus. And on Thursday, the 23rd, we did our spring concert featuring grades one through four. I've gotten emails from parents saying it was the best concert season ever. On May 31st, that Friday, we had our monthly all-school meeting, first graders hosted, they did a fabulous job. On Saturday, our Girls on the Run team participated in their 5K in Concord. Monday, this past Monday, we had our kindergarten kickoff. We had about 25 or so students show up. It was a wonderful morning. Tuesday, the 4th, that's yesterday, our second graders took another field trip to the Portsmouth Music Hall. And today, our eighth graders left on their big trip to New York City. Upcoming this Friday is Field Day for K through five. Our sixth graders have traditionally run the stations. So during PE time, our K to five students are learning about the games. And then on that, and then sixth graders are learning how to run the stations. Mr. Russell and Mrs. Radcliffe do an awesome job and our sixth graders always pull through, doing a wonderful job. Next week is the last week of school, Tuesday, the 11th, will be our semi-formal. We have it at the sheep barn in the, at the fairgrounds. We started doing that after COVID and it just has worked out so nicely. They used to do it in the cafeteria, probably your, maybe your children did it in the cafeteria. And it's just, it's so much easier to, they have the whole day to work on the sheep barn and get it to, you don't need, well, you know it's a sheep barn, but you don't really recognize the place. I mean, let's face it, it's still a sheep barn, but it's beautiful and I'm sure it will be beautiful this year as well. And then Thursday, the 13th, is eighth grade graduation. It starts at six o'clock and we welcome the board, obviously, to come, you are more than welcome. And I do have graduation certificates assigned. Yes, you do. And then our last day of school will be Friday, June 14th for students, and Monday, June 17th for staff. All right, that's all I have, thank you so much.
Awesome, thanks for the
You're welcome.
Yes, it's CRB, Matt? Okay, now for the review board updates. Policies, the two members of our policy committee are not
So the, yeah, the, and we had added Amber's DIA version because that wasn't in there. So that's a little bit new for you to see. She added quite a bit for our auditors, that was something they wanted to see. And then we still need to talk to that, saying that, that's all about Bonnie. Bonnie, that doesn't want to talk about animals in school. And you should hear Bonnie. And then, so those aren't ready anyway, so I'm going to do those. And then the reason that all of those are on this list, we just got the spring update from the School Board Association, and all these policies are required to be updated based on the current legislators. So just, there's a thought. There are more, but these are the required by law, obviously. So just put them all on there and they'll come away as we can. But getting them on here at least ensures that we're going to get to all of them.
So should we move these to a second or do we want to wait for the
Yeah, I think we can, we can put them to a second because you got some, they were in the drive and there'll be a second reading next time. And then if the policy committee has any comments, you do, so you don't have to be ready with anything next time. But if they are, that's great.
And I don't know that we have another business meeting for like a while.
So it won't be sold.
They have also, it's a two. Okay, that's fine. So those will, the top three will say it's third reading, the other ones will be a second.
Yeah.
Informational items.
I have one, I put an email in the drive today and I think this will be printed it from Amy Minzelli on the College School Board. Got the multimillion dollar award for the electric buses. So you'll remember, we just wanted to get in on the first round, round of funding. It's not obligate us to anything, but we just found out that we would qualify. So in order to move ahead, she's hoping to have one member of this board be her contact person. And then a committee, though obviously it's uniform. I almost gave her all the same without asking, but I thought I was, I thought I was ready for you guys. There will be a lot of questions, the company, the, I think it's Highland, it works with schools and helps us put this all together and
And if the writers are weathering
There's going to be a lot of like work and committee work to get all the questions answered and find out what this would be for us and what it would look like and how it would happen and who would be responsible for what. So, but the funding we did find out is there. So do you, I'm just going to be the person.
The next steps, webinar.
Yeah, there's a webinar for, due to the
Congratulations. You aren't always about that.
No, I know that, I was, I was planning on that. And if the kid lets us know, well, maybe after you and Amy talk about how we would go about the committee together and who would be on that, and it would be a joint committee for a whole four, everything.
We'll do the next, all of that in our
Yeah, start there.
I had to put a list together, but it needs to be done. Awesome, thank you. Okay, public comments? Can I share quite much tonight? Yeah. Potentially unheard of. Okay, no public comments? No appointments, reservations? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Do we need a non-public meeting or a non-meeting for the pair of? Heard so much.